All right, welcome everybody. We have, in addition to Janet, our regular guest, we also have Mark Schroeder, Schroeder?
Trader.
Trader, sorry, Mark Schrader. And I don't know if Mary Beth was gonna try to make it.
He's gonna try, but probably not using the city.
Okay. So what I'd like to do, so that you're not to stick around for the whole meeting, Mark, is to get to you first. We can't do, we don't have enough people to do approve the minutes anyway. So maybe we could just jump into Mark's business here. Mark, you want to just introduce yourself? A little bit and tell us why you're here and what you'd like, maybe we can help you with?
Sure. So my name is Mark Schrader. I was in Trumbull since nineteen eighty-four. My wife Penny was born here in Trumbull and Nichols area. Currently, I'm running Farmers Market with Mary Beth Schrader. We jumped in, took the market over last year when there was a change of management at the Nichols Improvement Association in January. General meeting, the board was kind of kicked out and we went for him because he was a member for like doing. So Mary Beth and I stepped in the paper in the farmers market before basically one year. And Mary Beth is actually moving to New Mexico in December, so she's gonna be gone. So we're looking for some people to run the market. So what I did is I put a little slide presentation together and I share it to see if it works. Kind of show you what the market's about. Very quickly, one second. Steenall School. Can you see that was Nichols Farmers Market?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so the Nichols Farmers Market is run every other, excuse me, every Thursday from May to October. We hold it on the Nichols Improvement Association property of community growth. So basically, give an idea of the type of vendors we have at the market. We have six different vendors that have produce, say, beef pork seafood flowers. We have eight vendors doing baked goods. We have three coffee and craft beverage vendors. We have eight specialty food producers. We have two health enrollments, five artisans, one services, and then night starter. And then we have two trucks and food tents, of which we have seven there. Just gonna give you an idea of the people we have. So these are the farms we have. They do quite well, they're quite large. The Gazy and Sunset Farms are our two biggest farms. The Sunset Farms is a certified organic farm. Eaglewood Farm is mostly meats and eggs and backyard looms. There's a local flower. Baked goods, so basically here too, you can see backyard looms is from Trumbull. Then we have an all the type Oxford. Mark Hensley. And then our baked goods, we have sweet brioche, another Trumbull. We have Pam's Cookies and then we have bread. And the seller, and then another Trumbull resident, where some side sweets. Specialty foods, we have oil and vinegar person, pickles. We have someone from Orange who makes really good granola. And that's all organic, which is Mediterranean type of food. And then the coffee, craft beverages, we have continuing on distilling, we're here brewing and French coffee. So they're hard liquor and proper to be. Typical market base. So we open typically the Thursday before Mother's Day and then we close last Thursday about October. Now, that's not written stone. Those can be changed. A lot of the local farmers markets man here don't start till second or third of June. So it's up to whoever's running the market, they want to start that early or start a little later. Markets are pretty full in the beginning, mostly the first three markets. We probably have between eight hundred to a thousand people heading to market. Markets run from four to seven on Thursdays. Our vendors start showing up around ten sharp as early as two P M. So typically, after the market gets going, everybody gets settled, they probably start coming around to read the majority of them. Then a little later in the season, when the sun sets a little earlier, you boost the market by half hour, get under six thirty. Give an idea what the current fees are. Again, when we took over the market, didn't know a lot, so we just took what the fee structure was from previous year. And what we're finding out, we're talking to other markets, we're probably underpriced. I would say these prices for next years, it'll open up at least a hundred dollars. I think that'd be bring us more online, other farmers markets. So right now, as I said, the market masters are Mary Beth and myself. Our volunteers are pretty much listed here and we have a good selection of high school students volunteering. So I would say you need a good section of maybe three to four really solid volunteers that you can count on. We're responsible for, I'll trade and say, marking the field where the vendors go. We also set up a tent for ourselves, for the music vendor. And if we have any community tents, we sent those out also. So we can be setting the thing with them, two to four tents per market. All the other vendors bring their own tents, so we don't have to worry about that. And then PJ Prost, that means she plays guitar and stuff in all the music, with all the markets, so she's a real help and the music selection is excellent. And like I said, then we have a lot of students coming for community hours that are decided. The biggest thing we need volunteers for at the market is actually helping park. We have two lots. They can get quite busy and people don't know how to park, so we've got to show them where to park. Especially our lot number two, if I share it, it's a big field. So that's where you need most of your volunteers as the market. So this is a general layout of the market. And I actually update this every week. Typically doesn't change too much, but there are certain vendors for whatever reason can't make it. So we will maybe move some things around, keep the market kind of tight and try to avoid any good open spaces. Right now, we have about forty vendors. Couple of things I would do for next year, I'd recommend cutting down on two things. One, artisans really don't fit in with the farmers market. It's something that we just inherited from the previous market masters. And what I would do, trying to have that five or six of those, I would go down to one rotating tent for the, for next year, where you can have different artisans come in each week and then charge them just the rate each market. And I think that would make the market a lot better, by having less of these artisans. People. They prove. Also with food trucks, I would probably cut down to one food truck and make it a rotating space. Lot of issues that they had with the market in the past, the previous market masters were promoting it as a place to kind of hang out. So it was a big thing that had a lot of people come, stay for the whole market, just sit on the grass, you get the food trucks. But the only problem is they weren't finding much from the vendors. So the vendors business started to get down. And we actually had nineteen vendors not come back this year because they said they didn't make money. And actually, I think they were set to be done period. So the idea we're trying to do this year is have a smaller space for people to hang out. And we've been really promoting the time to support the farms. Which is the main thing with the market. So again, next year, I've cut down a little bit. Food trucks and stuff. You've got the most people on just hanging market. And we also found the, you have forty people coming hang for the whole market. That's forty parking spots that don't turn out. You can have a hundred to a thousand people on the market for getting for those who haven't seen the market, let's see if I can get this to come up. So that's the gist of the market, give an idea how much time you spend during the week on the market. Typically, Mary Beth and I will meet Tuesday morning, ten o'clock at Glasgow for a team party. And just review what the market layout is going to be for the week. And then I email out the layout to all vendors and volunteers. And then again, on market day, we usually need that field at about ten o'clock in the morning, where we go and actually spray paint the field, marking where the vendors want to go. So when they come in, they can go to their spot, which is also on the map, or we have the initials on the stocks. So it's quite well organized. That's the venue, the relationship with what we want. So once the market's up and running, not a huge amount of time, like I say, we'll come in at ten, mark the field, takes about an hour. Then come back at, we also put the two or three tents I thought we had for that one. And then we come back at two o'clock. So that's the gist of how it works. And if you have any questions, then obviously, can there this lead? And then question?
That's a great presentation, Mark. Yeah, lots of questions, I'm sure. One, I guess, is are you or Mary Beth gonna be still doing this next year or you?
Well, Mary Beth is moving out of state, moving in New Mexico. Yeah, okay. I will help some, but I'm also running through other organizations I volunteer for, so I've made the commitment to do this this year for time to help the organization out, past president. Over thirty years ago. Mary Beth and I kind of stepped up to help this one here. I can help some, but I'm not gonna be able to do it for time. Especially setting up.
Okay, is, is the farmers market a, is it an official organization, a five oh one C three or anything like that? Or how do you, how was it organized?
Association of the five oh one seeds race, so yes.
Okay.
Has, has anyone from the N I A board been approached to take this on since that is, you know, part of, part of that organization or is it trying to be kind of separate?
Yeah, no, yes, they have. And I think the problem we have with them is it's relative to the young board. Most of them have young children and are working from home.
Okay, that makes sense.
Mary Beth and I are retired, so we have persons that we can do. Spend time, so. You know, unless you work for yourself at your house or something, then you can spend a half a day doing this on Thursday.
So in addition to half a day on Thursday, there's, looks like there's a bit of prep work over the off-season and in-between days.
Yeah, so I would say in January, you start, you want to, you want to start reaching out to the vendors, make sure that they want to commit again for the year. Most of them will come back, they'll repeat. Some, some may not, you know, if they're not making money, they won't come back. It's seeing you doing a little better this year, we did a survey of them. I would say, you know, the farms are doing well and that's really what we mean by. Yeah, it's not, it's, again, I, when I took it over, we had nothing. We had no turnover. I had to go to the website, get the names of people there, were there the previous year. The old market master had sent an email out to the vendor saying he wasn't involved anymore, to contact us. And luckily, someone forwarded that email. Able to kind of line up email addresses with the different vendors. So we basically started from scratch, we had no idea. But it worked out.
So who will, oh yeah, Mark, please.
Yeah. Hi, Mark, nice to see you. Just a quick question, can we, do you have like a little flyer or something you've put together, looking for a volunteer? Is it like an official position that you want us to share on our social media? We could do that for you, I'm thinking.
It's definitely. Yeah, I don't, I don't have. We, we kind of just reaching out to different people.
I know someone that's plugged into with the Westport Farmers Market, maybe somebody there, if it's, I think theirs is also Thursday, but I'm just thinking maybe a market that runs a different day, they would be willing to kind of just replicate their model or, you know, just pop in and do the Thursdays here. You never know.
Yeah.
An eager person.
Yeah. Thank you.
Hi, how are you? So I'd always known this, known it as the Trumbull Farmers Market, but it seems like it's been renamed the Nichols Farmers Market. I was just wondering what the reasoning was behind that, because Trumbull, it seems to be more, like, more inclusive or broader. Just curious.
Two reasons. One, it was originally the Nichols Farmers Market when it came to the N I A. And then the market manager for us changed it to the Trumbull Farmers Market. And reasoning went back to the Nichols because we wanted a green brand. There was issues with the other market where it was turning to more of a fair place to come hang out, a farmer's market. So we're just trying to rebrand, get us away from the previous market answers with Trumbull known as this. I'm like that. Away from that, we're gonna be the company to spend money with them. It wasn't meant to, not to be inclusive, just more of a new game. And somebody could always change it back, put it on.
Does your five oh one C three, how many, how many members are on the board? Five oh one C three, yeah?
The executive board, I think, right now, is about thirteen people. For the press. I was surprised when I think. Again, as we, on purely run, I was starting to get volunteer people and stuff up. But again, I'll put something together and if you could post it on your social media, that would be great. And to just get the word out there, that'd be fantastic. Anybody in the organization, bring it to us, just let me know. Come down, these are just on very close, when we see them, it's all about.
Sounds good. When are you hoping to, I guess you're hoping to get it as soon as possible. What's your?
Yeah, I think it's gonna be better. Yeah, sooner the better, and then you can come and see what it's all about. You can, you can work this, whoever, and it's kind of everything works.
All right, anybody else have any other questions? Their hands raised, I don't see.
We all expected eagle on this table to see.
That's right.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark, appreciate it.
Bye-bye.
Right. All right, well, we still don't have a quorum, so let me. We can move on though, in our discussion. All the agenda, let's see what we have. So I've got on the agenda, does anybody have to jump out early, jump off early? No, we're all good. All right, I guess we'll just go down the list then. So I've got on the agenda next, pollinator pathways, or any updates on pollinator pathway stuff, anybody?
Nothing new from me.
All right.
Pam, do you know if, if Mel got the, the seed approval yet? For the native seed?
No idea.
That was all I had for pollinator.
Is that for the veterans garden or the, the lawn after the covered bridge on the right there?
Yeah, for the lawn. I know she was still waiting to see if that was gonna come through.
No.
And then the watershed pledge was the next item.
Yeah, that was, that was Richard. I was hoping to, that was mimicked from Glastonbury. And I was hoping to kind of condense it into a smaller version and use it for our submission and, you know, maybe I can't do a Google Drive thing at all. So Richard had started that and it didn't quite, you know, didn't reach the finish line, but we didn't really need it for that point. So I spoke with Mel and it's probably best to put it back for, you know, revamp it to how we'd like it, put it back for the spring as a reminder about, you know, issues, issues with clear cutting and rip rap, rip rap, riff rap, whatever. But all of that and then, you know, other water usage and things. So that'll, that'll come down more in the spring.
Okay. And then anything on the water side brochure delivery? Was that, I'm not even sure, was that?
Here comes Janet.
Yeah, Janet, there we go.
Am I supposed to say something?
If you, if you like to.
When you could just charades it.
Yeah.
Well, me and, and four other people walked around our neighborhood delivering these. And I spoke to a number of residents, which I thought was really very interesting. I heard a lot of horror stories and some happy to get this brochure stories. I was wondering if they've all been circulated to the list that Tatiana gave us, if everybody's done those deliveries for the town yet. That was one question. The other, the other question was, and we've also started a conversation about this on Facebook, actually, on our, on our group. Like a a lake oriented group. And people are interested in it. And one thing that came to mind for me was how important it is to include the letter from the I W W C conservation in the, in the, with the brochure, because the brochure makes absolutely no reference to whether you need any permission to do any disturbance in the setback area. So and I'm hearing people, you know, saying I want to do this, I want to do that. And I don't think people are making the connection. Even though they've got the letter, some of them are more knowledgeable, some of them are new residents, are very excited to have some direction. So number one, I had asked, and I see on the town website that we have the brochure. And I can, I can send people a link to that. But what I can't find, and this may be my technological lack of expertise, I cannot find the new letter. There's a twenty seventeen letter lurking out there somewhere. But the twenty-three letter I cannot find. And I don't know if Bill can help me do that or if we've uploaded it or no.
I don't, I don't think I've ever seen it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it got uploaded yet. I know you said Mel that, but I didn't see any any response from her text. I'd just like to say Tatiana. I didn't see a response in that, but I agree, it's important to get that letter up there. And then hopefully, we can also get it out from, you know, the town as a blast. The letter and the brochure.
Okay, because they have to be connected. Because there's no reference to it in the brochure. I did write to Tatiana, got a wonderful response from her. She's willing to, she's willing for people to call or email her, do a consult. I mean, she's amazing. And she did make more explicit what, you know, what needs to happen and what she likes to see and everything. And it's just superb. So shout out to her. That's great. Makes it a lot easier for people if they can talk to somebody who's open-minded and helpful. So when the letter's up there, that would be great.
So we can, we'll follow up then with, with, I know Mel's in Maine, but follow up with her to get that added, because I agree, the the fact that it has the rationale for it, why it's being put out, penalty, you know, and some teeth to it. So you know, we can check with Mel, make sure that that gets up if there's anything else. And, you know, as I said, kind of getting it disseminated. And I know the, I, I believe Mel did summer on Dogwood Lake, but I don't think anything has gone out at all to Canoe Brook. So that'll be the next follow-up of how many people we need and the numbers to do that. You know, to get it out in that area, you know, as I said, and then put it out kind of as a, a full wash so people are aware.
Okay, that's good, because I have a few extras that were undeliverable for various reasons. So I also have some if you needed more.
There's another lake too, isn't there, Threshwood? There's another small lake in town.
I, I can't remember the name of it, but I think we, I think we just had it actually cleaned out. Cindy, you may know.
Threshwood, isn't it?
Is it Threshwood?
The only other one I can think of is Threshwood. So one of them, there's a
This used to be a golf course here, there's some ponds that are here.
The dam at Gunther Park was cleared out, or the Gunther Park pond.
Yeah, Gunther was.
I think that was cleared out too. I don't know if that's what you were thinking of.
I know Tatiana sent us several lists. Some are long and some are not long.
Yeah, I just don't know if Mel has followed up with anybody. I'd gotten the information for the email for getting through association, but I don't know if she has, has gathered volunteers. She did ask me to drop off the bags for Dogwood, but nothing for canoe. So that'll be definitely one that we need to follow up with. And Threshwood, as you're saying, if that's another as well.
Yeah, a few others. Booth, Booth Hill Road, I don't know which group that was in, but it's, it's in another list.
Yeah, so we can follow up with her kind of off and then see what still needs to be done and how many volunteers we can get and you know, and then get that letter up as well.
I'll volunteer and I think maybe my, my cronies might help too.
Okay, that worked. You're on. So thank you.
All right. The next item I have is sentiment and erosion control guidelines. Wasn't that something Mel was talking about too?
Maybe. And I know that we got into a big to-do because someone at the end of Valley View Road built a house, number nine Valley View. Cut down a whole bunch of trees on a steep slope and starting in October, I was sending Mel pictures of erosion coming from that dead end street into the valley when I'm walking Tate Road Valley Trail. And it's gotten really bad. In fact, I think it was two weeks ago, I took pictures of a guy shoveling silt into a wheelbarrow and pouring it down into the valley where it goes right into the river. So, you know, there's really there was no oversight on what this guy was doing with this property. And I think it brought up the fact that we, we have to have some kind of oversight, a little more aggressive oversight out what, what these builders are doing. And what the impact is, and the impact for this one house that was built is enormous. So and that may be where this bullet came from. And it's, you know, along where the Hardy Lane development is being proposed to, so extrapolate from there what that's gonna look like.
So I forget, is, are they still trying to work on a steep slope ordinance?
Yeah, I don't think it was ever updated.
That would be the same thing, right? We're talking about.
Months and months and no response, no updates.
I, I think Mel said that she had had a, a conversation with Turney Cordon, and that it looked like it was close to getting to what she was hoping for. And they are, you know, the rewrites are happening slowly. And it's been a long time, so hopefully that will occur. But actually, if you have, Pam, if you want to share some of those pictures, it would be interesting. You know, as I said, we see that there's a lot of these things happening and ending up being not the repercussions that we would hope for, as, you know, as Janet's saying, put the letter out so people are aware of of, you know.
Would you like to see the letter, the pictures now?
Sure.
Let me see if I can bring them up here quickly without taking much time. I'll just share the more recent ones. And we go back to here and shoot my screen. Can you see this picture? Yeah. Okay. So this is, um, this is a photo I took in the valley. Uh, where'd it go? Come back. Hold on. Did something. You can see here, this is all sediment coming from where the house was built up here on the slope. And it got to be about, I would say about seven or eight inches of silt here. And, and it went from, you, can you see my cursor where I'm pointing? So it went from here all behind me. So it was a long, it wasn't just this one area. And you can see here, where it was coming down and how much was coming down. And yes, this was after a very large, uh, very big storm. But this has been getting worse and worse since October. So it's not anything new. You don't want to see that. I'm going to see if I can find the guy with the, um, so this was a few days later. There were several inches more silt in this one spot. And then, hold on a second. You don't want to see pictures of fungi. But anyway, I had pictures also of, um, of the guy that was, um, shoveling the silt down into the valley. And I, I don't want to bore you with all the other pictures that are mixed in there. Cause I wasn't prepared to show any, any of them. But it was a.
Is this, the house is still being built?
The house is, is done being built now, but they're doing landscaping.
So did they take down the silt fence and did they have the hay bales there? And they just removed everything?
In October, there was no silt fence at all when this all started. So I sent it, per, per Mel, I sent an email to, uh, the town engineer, Steve Morrow. Anyway, and I never heard back, never got a response. A few weeks later, there was a silt fence, but, but I don't think there was hay. But by then, a lot of the rivulets, a lot of the damage was already done. And it just got worse and worse. And then recently the silt fence was taken away. They did some more bulldozing in there and they were making the hill, the slope that they had cleared of trees. They were making that into a, I guess a plantable hill. And I think they put brass seed down. And now at the top of that hill, there's another silt fence, but at this point, you know, with several wheelbarrows full of silt thrown into the river. That should have sailed. But, you know, I guess the, the point is there's no guideline for this guy. There was no oversight. Or if there was, it wasn't aggressive enough because he just kept doing what he wanted to do.
I'm not clear. Is there even, I mean, I guess there's guidelines somewhere, but there's, if there's no ordinance, then there's really nothing, is there?
Well, they said that the slope that he wanted to clear was within the, the parameters that existed, but that's what, one of the things we're trying to get changed is the steep slope going from, I think it was 30 degrees to 15 or, yeah, something like that. So that you can't just take any slope and say, I'm going to clear this of all trees and, and shrubs and then build on top of it, you know? So.
And there's also when you, when you go to P and Z, there's the whole, you know, I don't want to say you've got to jump through hoops. You're supposed to be, um, but they do require you to do specific things when you are building. And it is like the silt fence, it has to be proper. Um, it, there are hay barrels. There's, um, ways that you have to put up specific, uh, landscaping. So there's, there's a lot of regulations that go into it. But I guess the problem is you go there, you get approved. And then I, I guess the, you know, the question here, so what's the follow up? Did it, did it happen? Did it not? And yes, if there's, I know at Moorfield, when Mel was watching that, like a large rainstorm, things were impacted, but is it a one time thing or is it something that's continuing? And, and who's, you know, who's coming back to these developers to say, you're not following the rules and, um, you know?
Penalty.
Yeah.
What's the penalty? Is there a fine? Is there something that says, you know, you can't build in this town again? And what, what is the, what slap on the wrist and gee, we're really upset that you did this doesn't do that much. So. It just does raise the point for the Hardy Lane conversation also, because that property has some, um, impacted soil from the former owners who dumped there. And if this, if they're going to, it's going to be run off into the river from there. It's going to be all polluted soil and silt coming down. So.
All right. Thanks Pam. Not, not the most uplifting story, but what, what else is new, right?
What else is?
All right. Uh, that was near Hardy, what was that? Near Hardy Lane or what was that?
Valley View runs parallel. If you're going up Churchill Road, there's all those streets. Um, that are dead end streets or little streets that go up along the valley there.
What was the name of the street again? The street where?
Valley View, number nine Valley View. Hardy Lane, I think it's like two or three streets up.
All right.
Actually, can I ask Pam, sorry, like one separate question? I remember you were also watching, um, some erosion that was in the trail itself. I believe you were saying when you were walking and watching on the side, I don't know if that's still, you're still monitoring that or if that was from Valley View.
That was from Valley View. And, you know, because of the removal of the trees and that destabilized the slope. Now we have at least one mature birch tree where you can see there's erosion underneath the root base because the water just keeps rushing around it. So there's going to be trees that are going to fall eventually onto the trail from that steep, from that sloped area. And it's, it's at least 25 feet long. It's not just one small area. It's a lot. Uh, the, the trash that came down from Valley View, I picked up the trash and took it to the bin, but, uh, the soap down into the river.
Right. Thank you. And, um, anything new on the thousand trees for Trumbull Mosaic of biodiversity?
I think Mel has some designs for some signs that she's working with Dimitri on, but I don't know what the progress is on that. But there was some nice, there was some nice work done on what that was going to look like. And more trees planned for the fall, but I don't know if those have been selected yet either.
Well, that's cool. I'll save that. Um, and we've got, uh, updates on the recycling drive. I think Mari, did you want to talk about anything new there?
Um, yeah. So we were talking, um, this past Saturday, uh, it's been a couple of months now. We got, um, notice that the BIC pericycle program has been discontinued. And we've been collecting pens and markers still, just in case we found somewhere, but we don't have anywhere. So, um, I think we're going to have to make notice on the website and our written materials and on social media that we're going to discontinue that collection. But we've decided we'll add, um, all brands of chip bags, because we have, um, two known locations we can drop off. And then we already approved to purchase that box, um, to collect it as well. So I think we'll move forward with that. Um.
Sorry. Could you give me the last part? I was writing your first part and I missed your second part.
Oh, basically we're discontinuing pens and markers at the recycling drive, but we're going to add all brands of chip bags.
Chip bags. Okay.
Yep. Um, we voted to buy that box and we had talked about, I think two months ago, maybe just making like a recycling drive annual budget that we can vote on. Um, that would be helpful because I just sent back another box of, um, razors. And it's like $11, $12 a quarter roughly, but, um, did we decide what that budget might be? Mary, did you have anything in mind of what that might be?
Um, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I, I missed the last, I was just saying, um, I just noted there's two attendees that are on. I don't know if, if.
Yeah, I was going to make a, a mention of that also. Yeah. I only know one of them, but, um, yeah. My, my question was, I don't want to put you on the spot. Do you, but do you have, um, any information on what the budget might be annually for recycling drive items that we can ship back?
I don't, I, I wasn't at that meeting where it got, I don't remember where I was, but I wasn't at the meeting where you guys had discussed that. And, and I know that was one of the, uh, the areas. So, um, I, it's, it, I guess it depends how we want to, we, we haven't spent much. We've, we bought the, uh, the two banners, uh, the tablecloth. So our, but you know, our budget's been limited and then the box. So, um, if that's something that, you know, the group wants to do, I think that's fine. You know, to, you know, I guess, I guess it's to see how we feel we should best be spending the funds that we have. And if that's an area that's important and it makes an impact, then, you know, we certainly should. There's other areas where flyers, do we really want to do flyers? Do we want to, you know, or do we want to go with Richard's not here QR thing? So we cut down, you know, it's that whole discussion. But I think if that's something that we're getting, you know, it sounds good to me. And then, so if everyone wants to do that, you just need to, um, let me know for a invoice for that, which then I can get to Maria and then it'll come out of our special revenue account. And Bay State, by the way, we, they increased our amount of, um, uh, per ton that we were being paid. So, uh, so that's, that without even asking. So that's a good thing.
Oh, great. And then you were going to look at with Bay State, um, the adding a second collection bin at both places? I know we just talked about that.
Yes, I had asked, I sent to the principals and never heard back. And I'm assuming because it was summer. Uh, so I'm going to let them, and, and I had spoken with the Bay State representative. And he had said, if it's spring cleaning, give it a couple of weeks, but it didn't end up being spring cleaning. It continued. So they, they're constantly overflowing. So there's definitely an increased usage from those. And probably because we do put it out there a lot. So, um, the two bins hopefully will, will be, um, you know, allowed to be put in. We don't pay for the bins at all. So it's just one more. So they don't sit on the ground.
Mari, in answer to your question, I thought we had approved in a previous meeting for, to spend some money on, you're just like a general box, right? For stuff.
Yeah. So that it was, yeah, it was a box. I forgot how much 200 and something dollars or under 200. I forgot somewhere around there, but, um, to collect the chip bags. But I've still been able, the amount we've been collecting without advertising that we collect chip bags just by pulling out from the bags, people mix in with, co-mingle with the plastic. Um, I've been dropping those off at REI in Milford and one of our attendees, has let us know that Subaru and I think Milford also collects them. But we're just afraid if we advertise that the chips are, the bags are being collected, we'll get too many. And then I will go ahead and purchase the box, but I have not purchased it yet until the need arises. But with that budget, I guess.
Do they, if, or do they allow us to drop off for free? Like they don't, okay.
As long as it has room. I mean, they're paying for the boxes. Someone's paying for it. They're not one of the free offerings. Yeah. So it's, it's a fine line. Like right now, I mean, I roughly bring like one brown grocery shopping bag a month or whatever. Cause you can shovel quite a bit in there. But if we advertise, we're collecting them, then we might have 10 bags, let's say. And then I, they definitely won't have room.
Yep. Got it.
Pam?
So I propose, if everybody's okay with this, that we make a sign for the bin that is behind Hillcrest Middle School. That says Big Hearted Books on it. Because I noticed that that bin is getting packed with textiles.
Got that, right.
Yeah, something like that on, on that other bin, you know, go that way to the pool parking lot and drop off your textiles. Because, um, I don't think we're getting all we could be getting.
Yeah, I had that, I had done that last. It's funny because I went back to find the picture. I'd taken a picture of what they accept. So I, uh, you know, cause when people do ask who takes DVDs or VCR tapes and all. So it was, it was last year where I put a sign up and I'm sure it's gone. So I printed that out and I do have, you know, the line pointing and saying pool parking lot. I just haven't gotten there yet. So I will put that, I will put that up tomorrow. It was on my table to get to today and I ran out of time. But, uh, but definitely that, that bin was stocked with bags. You could see, uh, somebody, I, I think it was for, yeah, you sent that. Or somebody put it on that came to our Gmail account. So someone had put a picture up and it was definitely bags of clothes.
So for our attendees here, I don't know if they, how, how do, if they want to comment, how does this work?
I don't think they can. And.
If, if they need, if they would like to comment, I can give them the ability to do that. Just raise your hand at the bottom of your screen. If you're on the phone, press star nine to indicate that you'd like to speak.
All right. You got that attendees?
I'm not sure that, I'll speak for you Courtney, if you want to, if you change your mind, let me know. But, um, I invited, uh, Courtney Barr, who's on the Friends of the Library group. She's expressed interest in just getting to know, um, more information about our group and possibly, you know, taking a position um, down the line if we, um, decide that Richard's position is open. So, um, she's very recycling and composting minded and attended our, um, presentation that late April made at the library.
You're welcome.
Know the other attendee though.
And then Jeffrey, who's Jeffrey? Do we know Jeffrey?
Oh, her hand through.
Oh, there we go. Phone call in. Phone caller, you're on the line.
That is Jeffrey who raised his hand. I've asked him to be a panelist. He just needs to.
Jeffrey, all right.
Yes, on that. And he'll be joining momentarily.
Whenever you're ready, Jeffrey.
Uh, he's coming in now.
Hi, how's it going? Can you hear me?
Great. Yes. Thanks.
Hi, thanks for having me. Um, I just moved to Trumble.
All right. Tell us a little bit about yourself, Jeffrey.
Uh, I just moved to Trumble at the beginning of the month and my friend Sarah, who's on the line right now, who's the caller, invited me to the meeting and I'd, uh, I'm very into composting and sustainability. Uh, I'm vegan. I, uh, am hoping to start a garden really soon out back here. Um, yeah, I'm happy to be here and thanks for letting me talk.
Welcome.
Welcome to Trumble.
Thank you very much.
I missed the first, I, my computer froze when you were introducing yourself. So I didn't catch your last name, Jeffrey.
My last name is Guzinski.
Go ahead, spell that.
Yeah, it's G U Z I N S K I.
AI, right. Okay. Hey, what is that? You just moved here, you said?
Just at, uh, August 1st. So I've been here a few days.
Oh, wow. Yeah, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Somewhere, where'd you come from? Of course.
Uh, I moved here from Stanford.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, not too far.
All right. Any questions you have while we have you on the phone? Go ahead and shoot.
Uh, I don't have any questions at the moment. Um, I'm just here to listen. You know, this is my first meeting. So I just kind of want to see what you guys talk about and, uh, kind of get a feel for things. Uh, as my friend who's on the phone is saying, we both are, uh, adamantly opposed to all two stroke engines uh, in gas powered leaf blowers and lawn equipment. So, uh, we'd love to be involved in any committees that are trying to, you know, cut down on all these landscaping companies that are creating noise pollution and of course, you know, air pollution, uh, and adding to the greenhouse gases. But, uh, besides that, that's all I can think about at the moment. Um, but, uh, Sarah, who is on the phone may have something to say. I don't know. Feel free to, uh, pat her in if that is possible.
Didn't Stanford just start or have a ban on gas powered blowers?
Very weak. They tried. It has absolutely no teeth. It's, uh, I know they were trying to copy one of the local laws. There, there is a very small group, but Stanford's so large and it's hard to get anything done or talk to anybody in a government role. So it, they passed ordinance, but the ordinance is essentially the same ordinance as it was before.
I've been watching different towns around the country as they're starting to adapt, adopt those ordinances. But it's a tough sell because all these landscapers already own all the equipment.
Yeah.
But I, I, I agree with you. They are ox on.
Yeah, uh, it's so much better here though. It's amazing. The, the difference going from, in Stanford, it's like every single house all the time. You can barely hear anything.
All right. Well, welcome Jeffrey. Thanks for, for joining us. And, um, let's see what was on, next on my list here. We don't have any other guests or questions. Um, so you sat there on the, um, recycling drive, uh, Mari? The chip bags and the markers.
Yeah. Did we have the coastal cleanup on there or is that next on the agenda?
Yeah, it's just about, it's second to next. So the next, the next one I have is, uh, food scrap initiative. I don't know if there's anything new there.
Nothing new municipally. I mean, I, I. Nothing new municipally. I mean, I I as far as having anything at the transfer station. Um, at least I haven't heard anything about it. But um, I finally signed up for the RWS compost.
Yeah, I've had it now for about a month.
Yeah, nine ninety-nine, it's really a good deal. They gave us the bin, like, I think it's, and it. It accepts so much more than just your home composting.
Bones and meat and fish and everything.
Yeah, and paper towels and stuff like that. It's actually, I'm excited about it. Um, as you all know, I will be at the farmer's market on September fourteenth for Sustainable Trumbull. Would be great to have someone, either someone there from RWS. Or maybe one of their bins or something like that. So I tried writing to, I think he calls himself Johnny Trash. And I didn't hear back from him, but if anybody knows him or wants to drop him a line to see if he wants to send some stuff over for me to bring. That would be great. Um, I can also just try again through the Sustainable Trumbull email on that. Because I think curbside composting, I think, was thirty-two dollars a month.
Wow.
And they only had eighteen houses. Yeah, it was a lot. So for nine ninety-nine a month, you get two pickups, you get the, and then you get the startup fee. I think it's something like. I don't know, it's thirty bucks you get.
Used a troops like compost when I lived in Stanford. It was nearly forty dollars a month.
Yeah.
Well, they, one of the local haulers has it now and it's much cheaper. It's RWS.
Yes, I I have signed up with them.
Great.
Yeah.
And they, they also leave a new bag every time, so which is, which I was surprised. I thought I'd be buying a new roll when we were done. Just don't miss your. Second week or you have it sitting for a month and then it's a really. We were waiting for them to come in their hazmat suits when since putting everything. I'm like, no. Um, but Pam, I can shoot him an email and see if um, if he gets back and. Uh, we're, we're away that week, but I do have, worst case, um, my little green bin, if you'd like to borrow it and. You know, put it up there. I I can.
I could bring mine too, but I thought maybe some of the. Materials, it would be great to have a stack of them there or whatever they give away. Uh, there and then this week, don't forget, not on the agenda, but don't forget to come see me at the farmer's market on Thursday this week. Because I will be there for Connecticut Yukon Master Gardener. So I will have their um, that microscope and books and you can bring me your garden problems and questions and I will also have pollinator pathway materials. Come by and say hello.
My double hand up. Um, has anybody found out if the apartments in town are signing up with RWS or? Um, wanna take on that initiative? I'm looking at Jeffrey's name since he's. Interested in food scrap collection, maybe. I think that, to me, that's just like such a niche. I mean, all of us obviously are signing up for the food scrap collection at our homes where we can backyard compost, but they don't have that choice, so. I'm wondering, um, if we can help them penetrate the apartments if anyone wants to do that. Just an idea.
I'd be happy to be involved. Um, as I said, I just moved here. I don't know anything about the town. Um. I still have to learn.
Put you on the spot there, sorry.
That's why we're signing you up because.
We'll have to tell you whether your apartments are.
Yeah. Um, yeah, maybe Jeffrey, maybe you can get us your email to sustainabletrumbleum@gmail and we can maybe start a group email with. Um, Johnny Trash. I don't wanna be the the involved party if I'm not signing up to help, but um, I don't know if I have the bandwidth, but I did meet him. At our presentation on um, composting, so I I don't mind being involved in communication or whatever.
Excellent.
And honestly, I I know I had asked him at some, I was just trying to spin on my phone. I know I had asked him at some point if they were gonna be. Um, working with the apartments and I cannot remember. Um, if he just said, yes, it's planned or if they had already started something, so. Um, you know, that's obviously a little different than the one little green bin, but uh, that that would be great. Yeah, but still, they, you know, that's, that's one of the things where um, that everybody's in one spot. So I think that would be fantastic.
Well, Mary, if you're emailing him for the other question, do you wanna just add this gauge if he's interested in help and we can go from there?
Sure, and I'll tell him we have somebody that's new that can't wait.
Yeah, I guess I'll probably end up helping too.
What a surprise.
All right, thank you again on that. And then um, getting to your coastal cleanup, uh. Uh, Mari, you wanna bring us up to date on that?
Yeah, so I just um, heard back from George today um, that. He is deferring to Dimitri to see if we could host the. Cleanup at just Twin Brooks Park or if the group has a suggestion for another town park. Um, he was not in favor of us dispersing attendees to the commuter lots to clean up there. Because they're, I guess, state property and liability issues. Um, we have done that in the past and I'm not sure, tidy up Trumbull, how they. Handle the liability of their event, but um, I mean, I guess if. Everybody feels that one of the parks is more into cleanup, we can do it. Otherwise, we can just pass on doing it this year. I mean. I don't know. I'm willing to give my time that Sunday and try to, you know, market the event, but if. The town's not in favor of it, I'm, I don't need to, you know, move forward. So I guess we could wait and see what Dimitri says, or does anyone have? An opinion?
If the, if I know for the bags when, uh, because we always get that Route one eleven um, uh, down to twenty-five. And the bat, we just leave all the bags. It ends up going by Jensen, basically. Or it does go into the commuter lot, which we've left and the town has picked up. So I'm not sure. Uh, what's changed, but maybe what about even outside of the commuter lot or Christian Heritage, which is. Right there if they're willing to, you know, allow that and a pickup. Again, I may say there's liability, but. You know, I I don't know. I hadn't heard that in the past, so. You mean, right, the park, the the that park and ride, that's the liability? Is that which?
Well, I said that we would, you know, um, he was, George initially had said um, to circle back because he didn't want. Bags left all over town to have to go pick up. And I, you know, I said, well, based on our participation the last two years. I would anticipate everybody being at um, two, a maximum of three locations, I thought. Wherever we meet at the park and then maybe the park and ride, I I threw out there, Pam, because we always clean up there for hours. There's. Um, day's worth of work there. Um, and then I said maybe a third location and he responded to say that the one eleven twenty-five. Commuter lot could use cleanup, but it's state property, so for liability. He didn't wanna commit to it. So he deferred to Dimitri and um, I'm just waiting. But based on that feedback, I mean, what does the group feel? Men don't wanna spin my wheels to promote an event, stand there and have like five people show up at the park or have people come and there's not much to do. Do we wanna just opt out this year and put our efforts elsewhere? Um, I'm fine with whatever the group decides.
I don't disagree with you. I think. You know, we could promote it as something that people can do on their own, kinda like an anytime cleanup, but this is an event that's. Bigger than just what we do around town every day.
Maybe make the post, share the Save the Sounds International Coastal Cleanup. Offerings which include attending any of the truly coastal locations and that, you know, that's again how I got started years ago going to. The hosted Fairfield location. So people could in our town attend there. Or they could do an anytime cleanup and we could reshare our link and call it a day.
I think that's the way to go.
Okay. I'll run it by April since she was co-captain with me the last two years, but I'm fine with that if. Put our efforts elsewhere.
Yeah. All right. I'm just making notes. Um, so you'll talk to April. Okay, um, so let's see, moving on, I have. Uh, farmer's market, we talked about already and Pam's gonna be there on Thursday. And Thursday, September fourteenth, right?
I'm blessed, I get long.
Uh, let's see, um, steps, got this, sorry. And then let's see, do 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 moving on. All right, so getting near the, near the end here. Um. Uh, we were uh. In a flurry to get everything done for submittal to sustainable CT to get our bronze. Certification, recertification. Um, just a quick summary for those of you who don't know. Jeffrey, we, I don't know if Stanford is. Um, participating in sustainable CT, if they, you know, if they have uh, any certifications. With uh, sustainable CT, are you familiar with that?
I I actually wasn't involved a lot in uh, any of the Stanford programs, so I don't know. Um. Yeah, unfortunate, sorry, I wish I could help.
That's fine. It's some of the towns are doing a lot on uh, in this and some are doing. Some aren't doing anything. Um, but we got, there's bronze, silver, now there's gold certification. That you can get depending on all the various things that we've just talking about are only some of the things you can do. Uh, there's like thirteen, about thirteen different. Uh. Yeah, actions and then there's all subactions within them. So there's, in addition to what we've been talking about, you know, composting and recycling. There's also, you know, food networks and homelessness and and uh, transportation and all, you know, everything under the sun. And so we were certified, we got bronze certification in twenty twenty, we got silver certification in twenty twenty-one. But it all runs out in three years. You have to get recertified. So now we're recertifying, we just reapplied. Because the deadline was noon today to get recertified for bronze, so we submitted the information. To sustainable CT today and uh, we'll hear back. I don't forget how long it took them last time, a month or so to, to get back to us, but. Uh, we'll hear back whether or not they have questions. They always have questions, but um. We'll find out and probably in in a couple of months, whether or not we're actually recertified for. At bronze level. So uh, thanks, Mary, for writing up all kinds of stuff for this thing. Uh, Mari and everybody else who who participated, everybody participated, um, really.
Heavy lifting on that, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
So Stanford is, Stanford is registered as a town, but they're not certified.
Okay, yeah, so they they've gone through the process of I, of getting a town liaison and maybe. A, some sort of, uh, I don't know. Uh, we did a, uh, town council. Uh, what was it? Resolution, there you go, town council resolution that said we would be registered with sustainable CT and then we. Then we actually did some stuff. So um. Yeah, so I guess Stanford's in, that's why I hadn't heard anything because they weren't really doing much in Stanford. And Bridgeport's the same way. I think they're, I think they're registered, but they haven't, you know.
But Bridgeport hired a guy.
Yeah, they have a guy there. Maybe a year, maybe less than a year, not too long.
Yes, I met him because he wrote to the Pollinator Pathway. Asking about buying some signs for pollinator gardens that they put in around town.
Really?
So I said, hey, oh, it's nice to meet you. I'm on this team. I work in trouble. So we're, I'm probably gonna bring him his signs up. We'll just say hello to one another.
That's good. I forget his name, but I saw his name there too. Chadwick, that's right. Yeah. So that's good that they have somebody who's at least doing that and maybe will help them at some point if they need help.
One interesting thing um, that came up, because uh, we had dinner, I had dinner with Mel and Mary a couple of weeks ago. And I think it was Mel said she had a conversation with Mary Hoag from Fairfield. And that um, they don't know that they're gonna stay certified as a town anymore because they feel like. They jump through hoops to get all of these initiatives done and they have to continuously send in to stay certified, so. They're not really sure that it's worth.
It's a ton of work. It's a ton of work. Yeah. I imagine that, I mean, you need, we only needed two hundred, two hundred, right, was it? Mary, two hundred points.
I put in three twenty-five, you need two hundred, but I was worried if we don't have everything and.
Right, you need one from every category, right? That's the thing. You have to get at least one from every category and some of our categories were a little weak. So we'll see how it goes. Uh, but you need seven hundred points to get gold. And you have to be a climate, something champion or I don't know, but something like that, all kinds of stuff. And I don't know how. You know, you need a whole like team of professionals to keep going on this stuff, it seems to me.
Well, some of them don't apply to every town, like we're a small town compared to others, so we don't necessarily have a. You know, municipal bus system and we don't.
Right, or Brownsfields, right, that kinda stuff, yeah.
Homeless problem, that kinda thing that we can enact certain things to get the point, so makes it harder.
Yeah, it's a little tricky. Um, so.
Go, can I go back to tangent, sorry, back to Pam for, do you have a relationship with Chadwick? I like to say Chadwick. Um, if you do, because remember when we spoke with George, it might have been a year ago or more. Um, but we were talking about uh, how the, how the city of Bridgeport was dealing with their garbage when we were talking about Big Belly. And there was some service that he said wasn't um. Wasn't town-sponsored or being paid for from the town. Yeah, there was something in there that he was gonna check into. And then I know that if there was never, we we didn't hear back, didn't follow up, so that might be. Worth trying to find out what they're doing, how does that work or, you know. Monthly cost for that, since we still have that poor big belly up in the air, which.
Yeah, uh, well, if I, I haven't, once I quoted him the prices on the signs. Um, I didn't hear back from him. I did provide a W nine for the Pollinator Pathway and Jeffrey, this is Pollinator Pathway. An organization I work for, uh, but it's also one of the Sustainable Connecticut's bullets on that list of things that you have to do. You have to be. Pollinator-friendly town, et cetera. Um, but when I do finally meet him and exchange signs for money. I will, I'll ask him about that. That's a good, good question. I mean, if if you read about how he was hired and how that whole position came about, it's very interesting to me.
Have to look, I didn't see that.
May, April's here. Hi, April. We have um, April who's muted, that's fine. Uh, you can unmute yourself at any time because now that you're here, we have a quorum for one thing. Looks like you, either your phone's moving around or you're driving um, erratically.
No, I'm I'm driving. Um, yeah, okay, yeah, that's why Mari told me to jump on the last couple minutes. I'm here, what do you wanna vote on?
Oh, how about the minutes? How about we approve the minutes from last time? We now have a quorum to do. Who wants to move? Uh, to approve.
I I can move them.
Oh, sorry, Mari moved it for you. You gotta be quicker. Mari moved. Who wants to second? You can second, April, thank you. All approve. Yay, thank you. All right, Mari, April, hold on, I gotta write things down. Um. Let's see, was there some things or something, something?
We were gonna, I was, April, I was gonna call you after the meeting. Um, just I, I I can't talk. I updated the group on the correspondence on International Coastal Cleanup Day. And I said, you know, if we're limited to just one park location in town. Do we wanna just post that International Coastal Cleanup is happening at neighboring towns that are truly coastal? People can participate or they can do in. Anytime cleanup and give them the link from our website to use the the app and call it a day. I mean, I feel like if. Um, it's not meeting our needs, are, is it worth our energy to continue as hosting it? And I was gonna ask your opinion on it. What do you think?
I'm just confused as we would be permitted to host it the last two years and all of a sudden this year the answer is different. It just, it's mind-boggling. Other group in town does it.
Somebody thought, somebody asked the lawyer, I think, is what happened, right?
Well, we're permitted to do it. It looks like um, Dimitri was gonna weigh in on. Whether we were permitted to do it at just one town park or whether we're allowed to disperse groups to various commuter lots. I mean. We can do it at a park. It's just, is it warranted and or do we wanna just promote International Coastal Cleanup Day? And aren't any time cleanups anyway? I mean.
I mean, we can. I just don't think we're gonna, we usually get about forty people and who show up, which is awesome and they go around town, which is great. Um, again, I think it comes down to, I'll throw it out there, the equity issue. How can one group in town be allowed to do it and another group in town is told, no? Please explain.
Then they'll tell everybody they can't do it in the main.
I mean, and it's a good thing for the town. I mean, we clean up schools, we clean up the roads, we clean up things that aren't necessarily town property, but are part of the town. So.
Right.
The state's not gonna come and clean up the uh, any of those parking lot municipal, I mean, commuter lots anytime.
No, and they're disgusting.
Yeah. So.
So, I mean.
What do you wanna try to do on this? Is it only one? They they said you only work at a one park? Is that what they said, Mari?
I get the impression it was just more not to go on to state property. I get the impression it was just more not to go on to state property.
Oh, okay, so you could do, you can do Old Mine and Twin Brooks and whatever you want, really. If you wanted, if you wanted to not do the commuter lot.
Right.
You'd still do a town, other town, but there's still plenty of garbage and, you know, every, everywhere.
It would be good to have a suggested route for people. Either you do your own neighborhood or go to Beechers Memorial Drive or go to the commuter lots to clean up. Because, I mean, I'm on the Tate Road Trail every day and I clean it up every day, it's pretty clean. I'm in Twin Brooks once or twice a week cleaning up. So there are certain places in town that are not that bad.
Right.
If we just promote it and say, here are some neighborhoods that could use your help, maybe that's a way to go, I don't know. If we're allowed to do that.
I guess we need to hear back from Dimitri on what what has transpired since community women uh promote this every year and everybody has their spots they hit. So is it that they don't have, is it partially they don't have enough guys to be driving around and picking up the bags? Or is it, has there been an issue and now they don't want people to go into the, being told as a town event to go into the commuter lot? So if, you know, kind of two different things there. So I guess if he can just let us know what the issue is and you know, maybe that is anytime, whenever cleanup does turn into more, here's spots that could be addressed versus this where it's kind of a sponsorship type thing, where we're asking people to specifically go to spots.
Is it because we're a town group and Trumbull Community Women is a private organization and their insurance covers attendees?
I don't know, that's why, that's why I'm curious, or did something recently happen? Or something in another town happened, or it was just going through Dimitri and not through George and now George is saying, you know, this is a lot, do you know what I mean? It might be kind of the level you're going to of who's looking at things. So I guess if Dimitri can give us exactly what and why and then to, you know, we can steer it from there.
Okay, all right.
Mari, April, whatever you wanna do, whatever you wanna do, Mari, maybe you're, you're the organizer, so however you decide you wanna handle it.
And it's a great thing, it's a shame to lose it, but I get, you know, the roadblocks kind of take away from the uh the want and need to help sometimes.
Yeah, I mean, just to throw it out there, Mari's been trying to get a date since June. Here we are in August, finally got a response going back and forth today. So it's just, it's it's insensitive on the town's part, I'll say it. Lack of communication or transparency for sure. But I'll talk to Mari offline and we'll come up with a decision.
All right, sounds good. Um um so the next second to last item, second to last item is uh membership on the team. That we have a number of changes, potential changes, Pam's nodding her head. Uh Pam, you wanna go first?
Well, it it came up recently that one of our members is going to, is looking to leave the group, but there's no one to take his place. We have to have a certain number for a quorum. And um I'm planning on leaving too. And I've been doing this since, what, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen? But I don't wanna leave, there's not gonna be someone to take my place. So I was wondering if we could have a discussion about how best to put a team together so that we have a more robust group of people to help do the initiatives that we wanna do. And um continue the group, because it would be a shame for the group to just celebrate, because there's not enough people to do the the uh projects and things. So I was wondering, you know, do we wanna ask the Trumbull Times to do a story about the group and that we're looking for new members? Do we wanna put it on social media? Do, is there, are are there other ideas around getting some new members on board?
So Richard, Richard is is leaving, has indicated he's, you know, ready to leave and Pam now. Um so that's two people. Um we haven't, no one else is, Jenna's indicated she'd rather stay a a guest and a tender and an active one. Um but uh yeah, so we would need someone ideally to take your spot, Pam, not that anyone could, um but um.
Yeah, for quorum purposes, though, we do have to have, um we've got uh Kevin represents T-NAC, I'm Town Council, Mel, Pam, you were both Conservation. Um Ralph is Economic Development and then we have the Members at Large. Did I miss anybody that was forum? I believe it was three members at large. Um so we would, you know, we, if if anyone on and I, again, Ralph, I don't know if he just jumped on because he um uh we needed somebody from the commission, if there's anybody that might be uh interested, he's away a lot, most of the summer, if anybody is interested from Economic Development that might wanna be more of a um uh working member as opposed to a listening member, you know, and then reporting uh somebody from Conservation. I don't know if there's someone that might wanna replace Pam, but again, Pam, you're not replaceable. Uh and then said, then we have the the Members at Large. So that's kind of the first thing and that goes through the first selectman's office for uh people that would like to apply and become appointed. So it's not really uh I don't think it's, it's, if we wanna generate people coming to watch, that's something definitely in social media, but but fulfilling the spots, that's more of a, you know, appointed through uh through the first selectmen, so it would have to go that step first.
Not that that's a big deal, I don't think, but. Did you have your hand up, Janice?
No, I'm just.
Okay, all right, now I thought you were raising your hand to say, I changed my mind, I wanna be a member, but no.
I have to improve my sleep hygiene, so I have to limit what I'm doing.
Sleep hygiene's important.
Or in the conversation, maybe an informal meeting with Vicky to discuss the composition of the group and the direction of the group, because
Yeah.
I just think we're at a pivotal time, um you know, maybe a few people who aren't leaving the group um can sit down with Vicky offline and talk about what we wanna do moving forward, that's my opinion.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah, it would be uh, yeah, Cindy's gone, uh I was gonna say um yeah, we've sort of have to figure out what we're doing, because, you know, I don't know, the town hasn't been terribly active and anything sustainable particularly, right? So.
I think that's.
And without Pam, nobody's gonna get emailed back very quickly.
Oh, that's another thing, I won't be doing the emails and. Well, I think it's, it's, you know, it's kind of a come to Jesus moment for for the group and for the town. And um you know, there are a lot of, we had a lot of great ideas and we did a lot of great things, um especially during the pandemic, we we kept it together, we had our whole Earth Week thing that we put together and um but it's just, we kind of lost our enthusiasm as the town is just not really cooperating with us a whole lot. So I think that that's, you know, I think it's a good idea to talk to Vicky and see what they want us to do, or even the town council, we haven't done another town council update to see if there's any.
Yeah.
If they'll do anything for us, but.
Yeah, which is our, our last agenda item is actually what you're talking about there too, is, you know, what's the, what's our future plans? It kind of goes together. Who who's gonna be on the team and who's, you know, what are we gonna do? So um and there's lots, lots to do, there's lots that we have done, right? We keep trying to work on getting more uh you know, a good composting system at the transfer station, right? Keep on working at that angle, trying to do whatever we can, pollinator wise and everything else. I mean, there's a lot, there's tons of stuff to do, but uh.
Just a handful of people hold the reins to those i- items, either going forward or not going forward.
Right.
Um a year ago, George came with Mel and I to the Westport Community Gardens and he was blown away by that business model. And then we had crickets, we never heard from George about whether or not we could do something like that here in Trumbull. And uh anyway, I won't get into the whole back and forth, but just recently, a group of people from the Community Garden um put in a request to speak to the Parks and Rec meeting and it was, they didn't have a quorum this past week, so it'll be next month, but they wanna do something different there, so I gave George and Dimitri a heads up that this was coming. I didn't instigate it, it was from people who had the Community Garden. And I got an email from Dimitri just saying, nope, not doing it. So, you know, there's no conversation around stuff, doing things that are new and different and possibly exciting.
Or better.
Or better. Just soon.
Oh, there, they have a terrible staffing situation at the moment and it's, I I don't know how huge a constraint that is, but I mean, I get your frustration, because we feel it too around some other issues uh in our community that are happening and that we're gonna be raising next month as well, but I think the staffing issue, I don't know, Mary, how much, you know, you're following that, but the staffing situation seems to be a huge impediment to activity. So I don't know what the town is thinking about doing that, but I think it's a great idea to meet with Vicky and, you know, with a like a summary of achievements, because it's, you know, you guys have worked really hard.
Yeah, and and Dimitri and George, I mean, they're just integral to most of what we're trying to do too. So they really have to be part of that conversation. If it is a. So Pam, you'll stay with us for a little while before you go anywhere.
Yeah, and of course, and then, you know, one off things, if you need help with with certain things, I'm happy to pitch in. Um I just find the, anyway, you've heard from me. Ellie wants me to go, so.
All right.
Just to add, just to add something positive, since we do have a new potentially interested participant. Things we've implemented, Jeffrey, I hope you can um go to the Town of Trumbull Sustainable page if you haven't, just to check out, I we talked obviously about a recycling drive, you can get more information on um what we collect every month there and the glass pilot at the transfer station drop off and the textile recycling we talked about. So our team's got a lot of great things that we have accomplished and um you know, whether we're a team or not, we'll continue to hopefully do these projects for the town, so I just wanted to make that known.
Yeah, hopefully the team doesn't, I mean, we really are between all of us getting a lot of stuff done, so.
And don't forget about the Thousand Trees for Trumbull, that was a big deal, Tree City Designation, that's, that's huge. No, it's all, it's not all negative, it's just, you know.
It's frustrating.
Where do you go from here, once you've gotten to this point? And I think we need, we need help.
And can I, sorry, can I go back to RWS, because I did find my email with JR from April, um and I asked if it'd be open to the apartments, he said, yes, different pricing, but it will. Um and then he was, when I'd asked him about the farmer's market, when we were gonna be there, he said he was interested in supplying flyers and materials made up. Um but again, that was back in April, so I'm not sure what's happened with the apartments or anything like that, but I'll follow up with him to see if he's had any inroads. Um the last time I had asked him, and I think that was um, that was at April's uh presentation, he had said, I think there were sixty sixty homes that they were um that they were uh getting compost from, but that was before Kevin, so then there were definitely sixty-one. Uh no, so anyway, I'll get an update from him as well. And again, I do hope, I I I've gotta ask Cindy to push that from the town, because that's a great thing, it gets everybody's, you know, to get all that out of the um municipal waste system is a good thing. And uh so hopefully we can get that pushed up out as well.
Very good. Um that's all I have, anybody, anything else? All good, all right.
Did I mention come see me at the farmer's market?
Yeah, on Thursday and then next, and then September fourteen, I won't be around it, but yes. Uh Jeffrey, thanks for joining us.
Yes.
And and. And I think um Courtney's might still be there. Looks like. Uh welcome, thanks for joining us, Courtney, and uh feel free to um, you know, send us emails or what have you, what's the uh Sustainable CT, I mean. At gmail dot com, there you go, piece of cake. All right, good, thanks, everybody. Good night, thanks, bro.